Welcome to the ABC League of Women Voters Anoka County Commissioner Town Hall Meeting. I am Julie Trude, Vice President of this league. I will serve as tonight's moderator. I want to thank QCTV for recording tonight's program so more residents may view it on their channel and their website and YouTube channel. Our LWV ABC YouTube channel will share a link. LWV tape programs are to be rebroadcast or shared without editing, which is allowed only for use by official news media. The League of Women Voters is nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing any candidates or political parties at any level of government, but always working on vital issues of concern to members of the public. We recently invited all the county commissioners of Anoka County to attend this town hall meeting, and we're so pleased that we have four commissioners with us tonight. They cleared their calendars and we're happy to be here for all of you who submitted interesting questions on our topics. The four areas are the new proposed jail, the Anoka County Jail, Medicaid and Medicare changes, mental health programs, and appointments of residents to county boards and commissions. Questions were submitted through our website and links to submit questions were included with all the advertising. The commissioners were presented with the questions that we have chosen amongst those submitted. And before we jump into all the questions, I want to give each commissioner time to personally introduce themselves. Let me start here with our more senior commissioner, Scott Schulte, who you've been a commissioner maybe 20 years?
No.
Not quite. Not quite feels that way.
13 years.
Okay, great.
Thank you. I'm Scott Schulte. I represent District Four, which is portions of Coon Rapids, Andover, and a very small portion of Anoka. I've been a commissioner again for 13 years. Prior to that, I was a council member in the city of Coon Rapids for 12 years. I look forward to this forum. It's good to work with the League of Women Voters to enlighten the public, keep them engaged on these four very important topics that are very timely to Anoka County residents right now.
Well, thank you, and thank you for 25 years' service. Appreciate that. Now we have Commissioner Mike Kamash.
Thank you, Julie. I'm Mike Kamash, Anoka County Commissioner, District Five. I represent most of Andover and then the east side of Coon Rapids and one precinct up in Oak Grove. I've been a county commissioner since winning the election in 2014, so that's 2015 started. It was 10 years. Before that, I was mayor of Andover for 14 years, so I was very happy that we built this building. That was a great, that was a great work that came together by a great council that realized the benefits that this would bring to the community. And as you can all see how busy it is, whether you park in the back or the front, people come in and go in all the time. So it's been a great, great facility for us. So glad that the League of Women Voters are holding this event today. This is a good event to have. It's a good opportunity for everybody to hear some of the answers to some of the important questions that are out there. So, thank you again.
Thank you. And Commissioner Jepson, welcome.
Thank you so much, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for inviting us tonight. And it's not just election season. So I think this is the time where we can, you know, prioritize and talk mostly about the work that is being done. And it's an honor and a privilege, honestly, to be asked to be here and to participate with my colleagues on topics that we sometimes agree on, sometimes don't agree on, but that's why we do this work, right? So I'm Julie Jepson. I represent District Six, which is the majority of Blaine and all of Spring Lake Park. Prior to this service, I was on Blaine City Council for six years, and then also worked with stepping stone emergency housing for five years as its development director, and then the last five years as its executive director. So I've been on the board for about two and a half years, and so it's been very eye-opening. The work is very important, though a lot of the work isn't noticed unless you are impacted by that work. So hopefully tonight, with these four very important subjects, we'll be able to inform you about the work that we're doing, the priorities that we're giving them, and how we will continue to support you and your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Meisner, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Mandy Meisner, and I have the honor and privilege of being Anoka County Commissioner for District Seven, which is Fridley, Hilltop, and Columbia Heights. I believe this is my sixth year. I'll be starting my seventh year, I believe, in January, so thanks to the voting members of my district. And I agree, thank you so much for this invitation, League of Women Voters, and thank you guys all for being here. I mean, taking time to sit and listen to what we have to say. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're going to start out with the questions. And I think the hot topic by some of the people I see who are attending is the proposed new Anoka County jail. And I'm going to ask two questions in each of the categories and just lob it out. And why don't we just say, hey, I'll take that one, and I'll let amongst you decide, and if somebody wants to add, we'll let you do that. I don't really think we need four answers to every question, and everybody will get a chance. So, all right. So this question compiles a number of questions that we got. How does the proposed capacity compare to current and projected needs over the next 10 to 20 years? And that's the proposed jail. Commissioner Schulte, you've probably been on the Public Safety Committee for most of the time you've been in office. I think that would be good one for you to start with.
I have, and this is a, could be a really long answer, but I won't make it that way.
Okay, appreciate it.
The current jail was built in 1983. It has a current capacity, functional capacity of 190 beds. It's actually 238 beds, but the functional capacity is 190, and that's based on separation of categories. You have to separate males, females, dangerous criminals from not so dangerous, sexual criminals from non-sexual criminals, and the like. They're predicting in five years, in 2030, we'll need 252 beds, and 2035, we'll need 268 beds, and 2045, we'll need 304, and by 2075, we'll need 418 beds. So that's a 50-year plan, which is what we plan on building the jail for, is a 50-year plan. That study just came back a couple of weeks ago, or a week ago. Prior to that, we had had a study done just prior to the pandemic, prior to the George Floyd incident, and that study came back with 500-plus beds. And that was before sentencing guidelines really changed and incarceration rates changed.
That changes things a lot. I mean, so what are you saying the proposed capacities planned for in the current plans?
Well, the current plan that was, was out prior to this new study-
Was the 500?
Was like 540 beds.
And now we're down to-
The new, the new plan will encompass 418 beds, and we, that plan has not completely been drawn up yet. We're still working on that.
So you're saying that's about a 50-year plan-
That is, that is the 50-year plan.
With current laws and current sentencing guidelines and current population trends, some of those parameters?
Correct.
Okay. I think that was excellent answer, and I think I'll just go to another one, and probably several of you want to speak on this question. What is the total projected cost of the new jail, and how will it be funded? Bonds, levy, increases state federal grants? Mike, do you want to-
Yeah.
-take that one? You're kind of on the committee looking at finance.
Sure.
When we're on the finance committee.
Yeah, it's, it is, it is, the new jail is likely going to cost, right, right now, the estimated total cost would be about $234 million. That was up from what we were talking about originally back in 2022. Obviously, there's been a lot of inflation going on, and that's probably the big part of what the change will be. But it does depend on exactly how we end up building this jail as well. You know, we've got rising material costs all the time, and the, also the construction expenses that are going to continue to go up. And we're, then we're worried about how the tariffs are affecting us as the inflation continues to go up. But we'll see how that, how we come up with the final design plans. The final design plans are what really is going to be the big part of this. As we originally had a design plan that was more spread out, we took some time with, working with the city of Anoka to talk to them over the last couple of years, 2023, 2024. We had a lot of discussions about their issues and concerns. They wanted us to look at other sites. We did do that. One of the sites that they wanted us to look at was outside of, well, still in the city of Anoka, but to the north, up near the, the, the old state hospital area. We looked at that site. We talked to the owners of the property, which is the state of Minnesota, and they indicated to us while they took our meeting that they had no desire to sell that property or give it away or anything because of some of the things that were going through the legislature at that time. And if we get onto the, we'll get onto the mental health issues and talk a little bit about what's going to happen out there. There's a building that was funded, that's going to be built, and that is in that same general area of what we were looking at as a possible site for a new jail.
So in other words, that location just was kind of next because of other plans and the landowners' desire to not, not to sell.
Yeah, the difficulty of getting the state to say, we've got empty land here, go ahead and have it. They, they're not really open to that in a lot of cases. So, yes.
So then, let me go back to the $234 million expected or projected cost. That was 2022, I think you said? So-
No, that was, that's actually, we're thinking that's going to be now.
That's what you're setting your long-term budget plan based on that as the projected cost?
Yep.
Okay.
And we are looking at, obviously, we're going to bond for these types of things, so it does have some effect on the levy. But there's, that's the only way you build something this large. You can't really do it any other way. But we, you know, the belief is that that now that we've looked at other sites, and now that we've taken a look at what we're still wanting to do, there are reasons to keep it in downtown Anoka that are both for the, for the use of it and the financial situation. Because if you had to build a full facility that would have jail, and would have courts, and have a lot of courts, not just one or two courts, this, this building that we're talking about now will have a court in there, maybe one or two small courts that could handle the day-to-day operations without having to take everybody outside and move them into the court. That depends on how we can get it all set up. It was in the plans originally to have those, and so we're looking at that again. But if you had to rebuild the court system outside, let's say, of one of the city council members in Anoka would like to see it in Andover, over by the, by the sheriff's office, that would require us to build the entire court that's downtown out there. That would be much more than $234 million. We would probably be talking about double the amount. That's obviously not something the taxpayers would, would be really thrilled about. And most of the board would not be very excited about it. We did the best we could, I think, on coming up with this new, the new study that Commissioner Schulte mentioned that shows a smaller, a lower amount. There was some really good reasons for that, and when the, when the group that we hired was the same group that worked on the 2024 study that they did at the state level, and they came back with a lot of numbers for every jail across the state of Minnesota. And ours came in even lower, and we had some real questions about how they came, they came in as low as they did. So once we got the answers to those questions, they did say, we'll go back, we could go back and do another study. And we said, okay, we'll hire you to do that another study because we really need to know the exact number. And that's when they really told us a lot about what, what the effect of the COVID-19 pandemic has had, and the murder of George Floyd has had, the changes in the way the police are, are arresting people and different things like this. And it has had a great deal of difference, and has made a big difference on what we can expect. So that's where we got our numbers from, and we're going to, we're going to go ahead with that in the next few weeks to start talking about, talking to our architects on, on the next plans.
So the plans that you have are fairly far along to come up with this cost estimate, and with expectation of groundbreaking in spring or bids early winter, or not even thinking that far out?
We, we need, we need to do a couple of things before-
Okay, we've got a lot to do yet.
The jail site-
So that affects costs too?
Yes. Whether the jail site is the old jail site, or which crossed over Van Buren Street, or if it's a new jail site, and it's maybe perhaps, perhaps on one side of Van Buren Street, just for example. We still need to take down the parking ramp before we can build it, and that means we need to build a parking ramp before we can take down the parking ramp. And so that's obviously, we're lining things up for the domino effect.
Okay. Does, thank you, Mike, for giving us, Commissioner Kamash. I think we worked together almost-
You can call me mayor if you want.
Yeah. We worked together for a long time here in Andover. So, boy, let me, others want to add on to this, because I know this hasn't always been easy at the board level. You all have different outlooks, and constituents asking different things. Commissioner Meisner-
Oh, yeah, thank you, Julie. I just wanted to add, so Scott talked earlier about functional capacity, and the one thing that a lot of people just don't understand, including myself, until I started doing this work, is that it's not like a hotel, right? So if there's 200 cells or 200 beds, and you have 200 inmates, it doesn't work like that. You have to segregate them, separate them. This is all based on the Department of Corrections, so we just follow what the mandate is. But over time, I mean, it, it increases. So you have to take into consideration the formula of the increase of population of our county, kind of the rough percentage of crime rate, but then all of these separations and these categories. And I want to say it's like up to 16 right now or something. So the trend seems to be getting more categories versus less, and I just wanted to point that out because that really does affect, I mean frankly, the efficiency of our buildings. And trust me, we, we wish it was more efficient, but we just have to follow those mandates. So-
Yeah, that's really helpful, because I hadn't thought that way. I think we all think, oh, there's going to be this many people incarcerated-
Correct.
And not necessarily if you have them allocated, you know, half and half. One half might be overflowing, and the other half might be half-empty. So you have to do a lot of estimating to, was that part of that plan that you paid for?
Yes.
To figure out where the division is, because we often have separate women correctional facilities, and, all right. And Commissioner Jepson, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I won't duplicate anything that anyone else has said, but I think it's important to know, one of the things that I heard loud and clear at a lot of the public, public meetings that we had, a lot of private conversations that I had with many of those in the city of Anoka, was the transportation of, of those who are discharged. And so in due diligence, in looking at a separate site, looking at specifically the site between Anoka High School and the Rum River Campus on that state land, I talked to my Metro Transit colleagues at Met Council, and I said, hey, you know what, there's a, there's a bus route that goes right up Seventh, and then takes a left at Grant, and there's the, there's the train station there, there's some bus stops there. I said, what, would, would you guys even entertain the idea of just going, gosh, quarter mile, half mile north, in the event that there is a justice center created up there, and maybe twice a day, go to that justice center, come around and come back? Flat out, no. They were not willing to change that route. They were not willing to even consider the opportunity or option of changing that route. So knowing that a huge concern that a lot of those residents and a lot of the city officials have about inmates being released into the city would be exacerbated, in my opinion, by being not even close to a bus stop, not even having an opportunity to have transit, transportation at their disposal. So that, for me, in addition to costs, and in addition to a number of things, was a really compelling argument not to change that location.
Thank you. Go ahead. This is probably one of the hotter topics we're going to approach tonight, so go ahead.
Yeah, I know we'll be talking about mental health a little later, but it's really a big issue in jails right now. And, and one thing about our, our new jails, we'll have a lot of mental health programming that we can't do in our current jail. Our current jail's not set up for that. We don't have the space to do it. We don't have programming available. And it's one thing that is a priority in our new jail, and it's one thing we're looking forward to offering. And I think it's, I think it's woefully inadequate in most of the jails in Minnesota right now, if not across the entire country. And one thing about a jail, our current jail is vertically oriented, meaning there's three floors, and it requires a lot more manpower, meaning it's operationally more expensive to operate. When we build a new jail, we intend to build it more horizontally. So we have less manpower, cheaper to operate, more efficient, safer for both the inmates and the officers that maintain the facility.
That's an interesting point, kind of, your visual line of sight can really affect what you can manage. So you can't have a floor with nobody on it managing, right? So maybe operating costs will be more efficient?
Well, it's, the operating cost is definitely lower because you have, you have less manpower, first of all, but also you don't run the risk of security issues in elevators. Transporting inmates is one of the biggest risks you have, and not just, I mean, cost's one thing, but the risk involved with multi-level facilities is much higher.
On this, this topic, you've brought up some things beyond the questions here, and I appreciate it, because I didn't want to poke any of you with things that you weren't going to be ready for. But maybe you can just give us a hint at, is the county board at a point where you think there are enough votes to move forward with a plan, or is that still, you still have work to do to get to the votes you need? Go ahead, Commissioner, Kamash.
Yeah, thank you. I think-
As the chair, you're probably counting every time you show up.
True, true. I think we're getting there. Having this study done does give us some ideas as to the total, how big it's going to be, but that's been one of the, one of the issues that people were concerned about, is that you, are you overbuilding, and then you're going to have empty space for years and years and things like that. The other one, and I think that was one of the questions about the funding and the financing and talking about, can you go out for federal dollars, are you going to get state dollars? They can be very difficult to get. And one of the things that you have to worry about if you go out for federal dollars is control. If you, if you ask the federal government for some money, it might be a difficult time to do that, but if you're, if you're asking for money from the federal government, they're going to have some restrictions on that money. They're going to, or they're going to have some ideas on that money as to what they want you to do with that. One of the things that I think all of us can agree on is that we want to maintain, and I think the sheriff agrees with this as well, we want to maintain local control over the jail. You try to be helpful where there's, where there's need for some big event or something, and you need to have somebody trans, or placed in your jail that isn't, wasn't arrested in Anoka County or anything like that, and you have some space and you can help out, you try to do that. You don't want to be set to say, we're going to have this many federal inmates, we're going to have this many state, we're going to have this many city, and this many counties. We want to be, have the local control and let the sheriff take care of that. That comes with the, that is one of the concerns that we would have if we have to go for federal dollars.
So is, so you're saying you want to just have local inmates, not federal, and you mean local, like Anoka County, not like we're going to have all this extra capacity to rent out space, we're just focused on people who commit crimes in Anoka County?
Yeah, we're not, one of the things, and the sheriff has said this, that he is not interested in signing any contracts about having a certain amount of federal inmates that-
Okay.
-could come from doing work with other, other aspects of federal government. So those are the types of things he has no interest in, and we really want to look at the, the local control. And I think that was one of, some of the issues that we had about a year ago, was the talk about local control and making sure we hold it down to just doing the work that the people of Anoka County are paying for, that type of thing.
Well, I think we're going to probably need to learn more on this topic in the coming year as you work through, but it sounds like that study has been especially helpful because now you're almost down 25%. You know, 500 to 418, that's quite a big change in number of people you house. You got an idea of the price tag. Now you have to get permission to build, right? All right. So let's, let's move on to Medicare, Medicaid, and cover a couple of questions on that, that topic, so we get through all our topics. We could probably do a longer program on any of these things. This area came up amongst our membership as we were concerned. We know, in, in Minnesota, the counties pay for or provide a lot of services that other states provide for at the state level. So when the federal government isn't providing all the services they currently do, we are concerned as Anoka County taxpayers, what's this mean to us? So the first question I have was, how will federal cuts or changes to Medicaid impact Anoka County's budget and its ability to deliver human services? And approach this kind of maybe from big picture, but you've been working on the budget, you maybe even have numbers, I don't know. And is this one, who, who wants to take this one on?
Mandy.
Commissioner Meisner, you want to help us out on this one?
Yeah, I will take a-
Human services is an area I know you've focused on quite a bit.
Yeah, yeah. No, thank you. I, I have had the privilege of being part of the, well, we're now all committees as a whole, as of a year ago, but before that, with there was, it wasn't quite this structure. But I've had the opportunity to serve for the Human Services Committee for quite some time. And of all the committees, I say this often, Human Services is most my heart in terms of the work of the county. Medicare, Medicaid, this, it doesn't currently affect us directly right now, but the thing is, like, it's mostly with the cost shifts and with the staffing. Everything does trickle down. So as the federal level has less capacity and less money, that trickles down basically to the counties. The county really is the last line of defense for our most vulnerable. So while you're maybe not seeing it directly right now, I think over time, it definitely will affect us. And this looks mostly because of staffing. So for more, more work for our staff, and we already run very efficiently in terms of the staff for the county, wanting to do your tax dollars justice, that is going to really start to affect us in that way. So, meaning more paperwork, not enough staff to, to do that, and who's going to end up, you know, hurting is the, our friends and neighbors and family. I will also make a caveat to that, in Human Services in general, our staff is working really hard with systems that aren't technol, technologically modern right now. So I, I know that I, I myself, and probably some of my colleagues here often get emails and phone calls, you know, today, talking about medical assistance or some other kind of social assistance. And so unfortunately, that is common, and so I don't want to come across as like, it's not going to be affecting us. It, it is, it does right now, and over time, especially with this federal shutdown, if it goes much longer than a week or two, that's when we're all going to really start hurting.
I'm thinking I had read, Commissioner Meisner, that part of the changes to Medicaid will be some work requirements. Is that the type of extra paperwork you're talking about is documenting?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
And so then, as this work requirement, I thi, is it delayed about a year, from what I understand? So you have a time to plan?
Yeah, we do have some time to plan, but everything is just so uncertain right now. I mean, it's just so difficult for all of us in local government and for counties, because everything is just always up in the air and things are changing all the time. We do technically right now, we have a year before we really have to quote unquote, implement that. But in that year, it's not, it's not a lot of time to get, you know, all these things in order, to get enough staff, and then to, like, what is the infrastructure that's going to take place? And then also, you know, for the, the end user, the people in the community, how is, how is that going to affect them in terms of, a lot of times, things can happen even right now where they just don't know, right? They missed the box, or they didn't know that this was a question that they had to answer, that kind of a thing. So all those things are just going to exacerbate the challenges that we already have. But I was very long-winded. Yes, that is exactly a good example of what you're talking about, staff with work requirements.
Does anybody else have anything to add about how they're expecting federal cuts to impact our county and its budget?
Yes, I have a lot to add, actually.
Please go ahead, Commissioner Jepson.
So to, to, in support of Commissioner Meisner's point, financially, our levy dollars are not going to be as greatly impacted, just because a lot of, it's just extra work, okay? So to put it in perspective, Minnesota is very uniquely positioned in that all 87 counties are required to implement SNAP and Medicare, okay? Not every state is designed that way. So again, we are uniquely going to be impacted by these changes. Let's keep that first and foremost. Second, it's really challenging, based on Commissioner Meisner's comment about the technology. It is really, really challenging to actually do this work. As an example, a new individual needing to apply for Medicare, the initial assessment takes one staff person 14 hours to do the assessment, one person. To reassess, it takes that same person, that same staff, 10 hours to do a reassessment, okay? So we all know we're not getting younger, we're not getting healthier. So we are also, at the same time, having more and more people needing these supports because our aging seniors- at the same time having more and more people needing these supports because our aging seniors, and again, they're not getting healthier. And so the antiquated technology with a harder, more difficult individual to assess delays things significantly. And so what we have now are delays upon delays, but then we are required by state law, by federal law, to finish these assessments within a certain amount of time, which we can't do. We physically cannot do it. The only way we could do it is to hire a lot of people, and that is what would impact our levy, because we cannot afford, you all cannot afford, I can't afford, to hire as many people as we have needed to, to keep people assessed and reassessed. The other frustrating thing, two other things, so the reassessment goes, because of job reassessment, goes from every 12 months to every six months. So now you've just doubled, literally doubled, all of our work, okay? That we can't keep up with, anyway. The other thing is that reimbursements from the federal government went down from 50% to 25%. So that hits us at the levy right there. And then you also have, so you have the error rate, you have the job rerequirement, reassessment, but then, we have had a grace period of a three-month look back, okay? So the government is saying, we know this is going to take you a long time, we will have a grace period of three months, okay? So if you get it done within those three months, we will backdate it, great. They've changed that to one month, okay? So you've doubled our work, you don't, we don't have the technology to do it, we're losing social workers and case managers because kids coming out of college are used to having a computer right in their palm. They're not used to working on a DOS image or a DOS screen with a cursor that you can't even use a mouse. So it's this perfect storm that we're having to deal with, that yes, ultimately, we all are going to be the ones, whether you're on Medicaid, Medicare, where you get SNAP benefits or not, you will be impacted by this. So doom and gloom, right? But what we are really trying to do, everybody is aware of this, whatever side of the aisle you on, you know that this will impact your community. So one of the biggest things that we're focusing on as a county, with Association of Minnesota Counties, and really communicating with our legislators, the true need to get this technology updated, because that, that won't solve everything, but that will really, really help. So if there's one thing that you can talk to your legislator about, fund technology, fund that modernization.
So is the system that you're using created by the state of Minnesota?
Yeah.
Or the federal government?
State.
So it's kind of like, we might go through another thing, like the driver's license situation?
No, no. No, no. We all learned that lesson, and so all of us, part of Minnesota, Association of Minnesota Counties, are adamant about, it needs to be a vendor, the state can't do a MinLars.
So the, so the equipment that our staff is, it's an old, old piece of junk, and there's no other way to work around it. You have to use that. And you probably can't even buy a computer that is DOS run anymore.
I was, I was just thinking to myself, because I was, I had lunch today with some of my fellow General Mills retirees, and I was thinking to myself, how many people right now remember working in the 80s where you had the green screens sitting on your desk? That's what they have. They literally have those still.
Yep.
They can't, they can't copy and paste anything, they can't do any of the things that you do nowadays. As a matter of fact, obviously, as Julie was saying, you can do more with this than they can do on their computers that they currently have. That's how far behind. Now, money has been put forward in legislation, and it happened, again, I think they recommitted some more money even during this session, thanks to, I want to say, our, some of our senators, our local senators, Senator John Hoffman, obviously, was Human, is the Human Services Chair, and will be again, I'm assuming. And he did a great job to have some really great meetings on what was happening in the, in that, in the healthcare, in the world in our counties, and he was talking and listening to a lot of what the counties were saying. So we commend, we commend them for the work that they did do. We just got to get that money moving and get that, those projects started so that we don't sit here, yeah, like we're on a treadmill.
It is, it is a huge undertaking, though, so I cannot stress that enough. First of all, it's a drop in the bucket. I think it's 200 million that was allocated, I could be, is that, yeah?
It was 200 million allocated, and that's
But it's like
a pittance compared to what it's going to take.
It's nothing. And then too, in terms of
Because 87 counties and how many people?
Yeah. It's very layered, because even within Human Services, you've got lack of interoperability as well. So I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying in terms of, so everyone has patience, and then also perseverance, because we cannot let this go. So we have a little bit of a start here with this 200 million, and also, it is just a huge undertaking, so this is going to be, I mean, years and multi-hundreds of millions of dollars of investment.
I have a question about the reimbursement that Commissioner Jepson, you talked about, the federal government had 50% reimbursement, cut to 25% reimbursement of what, staff time to enroll somebody in Medicaid, or what is the reimbursement?
That's a great question.
It is. It's reimbursement for staff time.
Okay.
Yes, admin cost, yes.
Okay, so the taxpayers locally have to
Yep, cover that.
provide for the staffing to help people on Medicaid. So with all these changes, we don't even know what's really going on yet, because they probably haven't developed the rules that will run all these financial changes. And then we've got the public wondering, you know, is this going to affect me or my elderly relatives? Is there a role the county has in educating people about the changes that might impact them if the work requirements start end of next year? You know, people can't just go out and find a job or begin volunteering, it takes a little bit of work to get to that. What is, have we thought about that yet, or you're, this is too soon?
No, I mean, the frustrating thing is that there's already work requirements in place. There's already, you know, systems for auditing for fraud, waste, and abuse. There's already those kinds of systems that currently exist now. So, so the assumption is that the people who can be working are not working to milk the system. It just doesn't happen. Few and far between, maybe yes, here and there, but not to the extent that people assume or like to choose to believe. So yes, I think even though we are not making the decision on these work requirements, I think it is our duty to be community partners, to share with as many people as many ways as possible, when we know what's going on, when we understand the deadlines, what this looks like, what's the impact going to be? Because there's so much stuff we don't even know yet because it hasn't been given to us. So we're learning as you are, and I hope, I really hope that we can become a really good source of information for everyone regarding this information and how it will impact lives.
So before we move to another category, on the initial topic we've talked about, is there anything that you want to add, Commissioner Schulte, or Commissioner Gomash, that we missed?
Not really, no.
Okay, we've covered pretty good. All right, I want to move to the appointments one. And the appointments we're talking about are when there's vacancies on like Coon Creek Watershed Board, Library Board, those are the only two I can think of, I know of, well, Rice Creek Watershed. But I know that you have many others. When I was part of the study of counties, I realized that there are a lot of residents serving you and roles to help bring the input that they have, besides what you have as an elected official. So the question is, what is the process the county uses to identify, to vet, and appoint individuals to fill all these roles on advisory boards, commissions, and committees? I don't know who wants to take this one.
Mandy?
All right, Commissioner Schulte, go ahead.
Well, there's a lot of different ways.
All right.
First, they're advertised on our website. Commissioners all have a responsibility to reach out to their constituents when they have an opening on a specific board. Commissioners appoint a specific member from their own district to the Library Board, to the Community Corrections Advisory Board. We have specific boards that we are expected to
Based on your representation?
Correct. And we are supposed to find somebody from our district. Now, we can reach out to people we know, we can use social media, there's a number of ways we do that. We also have subject matter experts on those committees, and we sometimes rely on them to find somebody for us within the district. We also have our website where people fill out a form on the website where they, they can list their points of interest, what they want to do, what they, where they would like to serve, and then we can access that and find out, hey, they're from my district and they're interested in community corrections, so I can
I'm going to just stop you. I actually tried to find where these appointments were, when I'm now working on, we're studying all the watersheds, the metropolitan area of Lega Women's, we're just studying all the watersheds, because how many people really know what all these people do? Not many. So we're trying to figure that out. And all of them are filled by citizen appointments, and it's hard to locate. So what kind of a search should I do on your website? When I type in appointments, that didn't work.
I guess I would type in advisory boards?
Okay.
I'm not positive, I haven't searched it myself.
I'll let you get back to me, and I'll pass it on to people who are interested. We'll put it in our next newsletter.
All right, we will, I will get back to you.
All right. But tell us some of these groups, because we're, a lot of us may, you know, you might have people stop and talk to their commissioner after this saying, oh, I didn't know you had, so can you just name some of the boards and appointments? You named two or three.
Well, like, I'll let
And I think there's some of the
I follow commissioners name a few.
Yeah, maybe there's some in the, in the social service area, too.
Yeah, you said corrections, there are two with mental health, there's like a children's mental health, and then a family mental health. There is a Anoka County Children and Family, so, gosh.
Is there some related to daycare?
Not, not daycare, but, gosh, oh, now I can't remember the acronym for that. But there are several advisory committees, and then I will say, all of our advisory committees too, they are formulated by state statute, and they have a really good mix. I mean, I really love the whole premise and idea of advisory boards, because they literally, you know, give, or give input, but also listen to the work of the county, and it's kind of a back and forth thing. And then any sort of real changes then eventually does come to the full board for consideration. But the mix is expertise, you know, professional, there are lived-in as well, and then a community appointment. So it's, it's a really good balance, I think, of representation. So I know I did not name all of the, all of the advisory committees. There is a lot, though. I mean, I was, I was surprised, whenever we have our organizational meeting, and we have that list, and I see it in black and white, I'm always like, oh, wow, there's a lot. So I did a poor job, but there, but there are several, I think I named five or six, but
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So the three, so many of them, commissioners are appointed to them. We sign up, I'm very interested in that, I would like to be involved in that community group. And the three that I'm involved with is the Library Advisory Board, the Corrections, Community Corrections Advisory Board, and University of Minnesota Extension Services, which is 4H, and Master Gardeners. And so it's a great way for me, I know, to hear community feedback on how these programs are going, what's important to them. They don't have a ton of power, quote unquote, power, because they're just advising opinions, suggestions to Anoka County staff and Board of Commissioners. Now, that doesn't mean you don't have power because you have your voice. And I think that's what's so important about being on those advisory boards. Now, you mentioned Watershed District? That's a whole nother
That's a whole other thing.
That's a whole nother
Right. Because I know that works.
And so for me, from understanding, I still need to, I mean, I don't know, I could, I could live to be 100, and I still never understand the complexity of Watershed Districts, right? But anyway, from my understanding, if there are board members that are on the Watershed District and things are going well, and there's no complaints, they're happy, they're making good decisions, there's, you know, the community is being benefited from their position on that Watershed District Board, we usually just rubber stamp, you know, re-appoint them to another term. Like, the last two years, there's been a lot of retirements, I think that a couple people were very ill and needed to step away. So what we do in that regard is then contact, you know, anyone whose district, so I represent Coon Creek Watershed as well as Rice Creek Watershed, so we have those two watersheds within Anoka County. My district overlaps both of those. So when the point, when a vacancy comes up in either one of those, I'm asked, is anyone in your district who lives in that Watershed District interested in serving? And so I reach out to my community, I reach out to people who I think might be interested, they fill out that online application, they're interviewed by us county board members, and then referred to the full board for appointment. So that's a little bit more involved process versus, like, I have, in my district, I have an opening for community corrections. So if anyone lives in Blaine or Spring Lake Park and you'd like to be on the Community Corrections Board, please let me know, because I'm looking for someone. And so otherwise, we just do it that way, and it's a very informal process.
Well, and I think one of the follow-ups was, would the county consider publishing an online appointment calendar, so people who are looking for volunteer work would see an opportunity? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yes, we would be open to publishing an online calendar. We would talk about that. I did want to add to Commissioner Jepson's watershed comment, because there is a point where each city in the district has the opportunity to submit three names.
Oh, that's right, thank you.
The city council can put together a list of three names, submit that, and then the county board has to consider those names in the appointment process. And I did come up with that webpage for those interested. It is www.anokacounty.mn.gov/3122.
Thank you.
So if you're interested in checking that out.
And I know the watershed has become a little controversial, there was a lawsuit with Circle Pines and some of the Rice Creek, and then a judge said, well, if two cities want to go together and make in that list of three, that could be considered. So I think that may help you as well, because I know those of you that have served in city government, and most of you have, and I have, it's hard to get three. You might have one or two. So we'll see if that helps you find qualified people as well. Anything to add in this topic?
Sure, Gomash to Germany.
I was just, on that, you were talking about that, that issue that happened in the courts, and that didn't affect our side, or the Coon Creek one, because we do things right over here, no.
Yes.
But there was, there was some, a little bit too much, kind of in one city was getting two of the members, and that actually goes over to Ramsey County, so they have a total of four. Oh, sorry about that. Okay, I fixed it, no. So they, we only have four, totally in that, in that thing, I think, yeah, four. I remember there's Washington County, two Ramsey County, and two Anoka Counties. And for a while, there always seemed to be two people from the same city. And that's where Llano Lakes and Circle Pines and
Were frustrated.
One of them got frustrated.
Yeah.
They won the case, so we do it differently now. We make sure we get those split up.
And they, they do important work as far as development plans, reviewing development plans, so there are people that watch that at level of government very closely. Most of us at home really don't pay much attention unless it's going to be in our backyard.
And I did have one for the Community Corrections, which I think I'm going to have another one coming up, and I just called my good buddy Wes Vulcanin, and he gave me a name the last time. Thank you, Wes. Very appreciate it.
Well, let's, let's hope we can go to a more public method, perhaps, publishing the calendar. All right, let's move to mental health programs and cover some of these questions. The, probably the broadest question would be, what mental health programs does Anoka County currently offer for adults, youth, and families, and how well are they meeting community needs? That covers a lot, so maybe just a broad brush. Commissioner Meisner, you want to take that one?
Yeah, I mean, I do have a list, and you're right, there, there are a lot of services that the county does, I mean, that's our job, and it lives in a variety of ways. So there's, I'll just kind of talk about some categories. There's access and navigation. So the process, if you are in need of county assistance or a county program, it's pretty intimidating. I mean, there's all kinds of paperwork, there's all kinds of information that is being asked of you, and you have to give that information in a very specific way. It's a very tough way to figure out, and then by the way, you're already in crisis, or your family member or a loved one is in crisis. So you have all these layers, so access and navigation, there's a person that can help you through that. There's crisis and intensive services. So at the county, that looks like a couple of different ways. We actually have a mobile crisis response. Now, this is contracted, but this is available, so at any point in time, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, when there is a crisis in the county, there is somebody to respond to that. Ongoing support Um, ongoing support. So this can look uh, in a lot of different ways, but case management and community, community support programs. Under community support programs, I can give one example. It's a, it's a nice one. Um, it just opened up in Fridley. Um, oh gosh, it's right across from Unity Hospital. But essentially they are doing adult services uh, all, all day, uh, five days a week. Anyone can come in for a hot meal. They can get support group. There's art therapy. Um, and they named it the Mosaic, um, Mosaic, I believe, Therapy Center.
Is it for people in crisis or just any adult?
Nope, nope. That would be, that would be considered more ongoing and, and outpatient. So um, so again, so many different pathways in terms of services and care that the county can give. And then justice involved services. So this would be forensic case management and pre um, screening to ensure appropriate legal and clinical responses. And then last but not least too, we have the whole umbrella of housing and social determinants. So board and lodge services that address housing needs and also critical and mental health outcomes. But in mental health, there's a lot of need and gaps as well. So especially for our most intense and challenging um, cases, there aren't enough beds or facilities for that. And while, you know, and while it would be really great to have community base and outpatient programming and therapy, sometimes that's just what's not needed. And so you end up with, you know, jails that end up with a lot of mental health issues. Hospitals in our emergency rooms. And so you see mental health kind of touching really every aspect of, of our society, but then certainly of county services. So I, I don't know if that was a-
That's, well, there's so many. I'm just thinking if somebody's watching this program later and they're aware of someone who has an issue, I assume there's some kind of a phone number they can call. Um, where would they, where would be a starting point? Or um, they'd start with calling the main county number and that person knows where to, where to send them?
Correct. Yep. And then there's, there's also resources like the 988 Suicide Crisis Line. I mean, there, there are other resources as well that the county definitely partners with in terms of just working together. But yes, I mean, to start off, you would just, you would call the county and then talking about access and navigation, somebody would be able to walk that person, like here's where you go, here's the form you would fill out. Uh, but it, but it is a long, complex process.
And I think you kind of got into the, the question on the crisis response services that you talked about, there's a mobile crisis center. If there's, you know, um, a situation that would happen in uh, I don't know, let's say, a senior high rise where there was some concern, they could send a unit and help the people there feel cared for or-
Right, or, or just, right, exactly. That connection or follow-up. So a lot of times it might look like law enforcement might be the first contact or emergency response of some kind. And then so they would make sure that our contracted uh, crisis mobile staff would be alerted and then they would follow up with that individual.
And uh, so the question that um, is, that we provided was what 24/7 crisis response services are available in Anoka County? You touched on some of those. And are they coordinated with law enforcement, EMS and hospitals? And you're saying yes. So often the person might show up, they might be a victim of a crime or they might be at a hospital or in crisis, go to the ER. So all those places are locations where county services might assist somebody in need.
Correct. Yeah, it, it doesn't matter like where.
Does somebody want to add on to this topic, Commissioner?
Yeah, our contract, contractor is Canvas Health. They're one of the stronger ones in the area that, that take care of this mobile response and the 24/7 uh, care. And that's who we contract with at Anoka County.
So do we feel confident if we had some crisis in our community, we have what we need?
We do. Canvas Health is really strong. They're, again, one of the bigger players in the area. And uh, we've had really good success with them and we're pleased to contract with them again this year.
Sometimes it's just a tornado or something like that from nature that people find themselves with. They don't know where to go or what to do and-
Well, Canvas Health is specifically mental health.
For mental health, okay.
As far as emergency management, we have our own emergency management team at Anoka County.
And then they would interact with mental health where that came up, if that became an issue. Okay.
One thing I would like to add if I could. So um, you know, we really, really, really try hard to have everything for everyone. But there are just things that we can't predict and we can't provide. And so we've really just collaborated a lot, as, as my colleagues have said, with, with outside partners. But I wanted to just mention that our local nonprofits that focus on mental health, domestic violence, homelessness, food insecurity, we really partner with them too. Um, because we're all doing this work together. Um, and so I think that is a very uh, specific group of folks that we really need to focus on too, that we're, we're doing this work together. And so those partnerships are essential. Um, but I also do wanted to comment that last week, the Minnesota Supreme Court had a ruling that if there is a mentally ill individual that is um, is incompetent to stand trial, while that individual is waiting for a bed in a mental health facility, they are in our jail and it is the county responsibility to pay for that individual to be in our jail. So just wanted to make a comment on that, that this, this is very complex. This really digs into county government and how we are all impacted by a lot of this, these struggles that our community is facing.
Um, I, there's one other question that was amongst the sheets. It kind of covers this category and it's about Unity Hospital. You saw that question. That's real timely with Alina looking at closing Unity Hospital's Inpatient Chemical Dependency Unit. Do we see a role for the county uh, to work with Alina or somebody else to kind of fill this gap? Or are we just kind of stuck with a gap?
Uh, you know, I, you know, the, yeah, we, we are kind of stuck with a gap. And I, I'm saying this too because you talked about Medicaid. Um, that is going to be affecting our hospitals. And so again, we're all interconnected in terms of the work that we do and, because we're, it's all our, our friends and our family and our neighbors, right? Um, so I, I, I think that, yes, there is going to be now an even, even bigger gap to fill, in my opinion. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure what that's going to look like. But at the end of the day, uh, certainly local government, county government, that is our job. We do have to figure that out. And so I will say we're pretty scrappy and we're creative. So I, I don't know what that looks like, but I, I do, I do think that gap is going to get bigger. Um, and it's going to be a real strain on all of our hospital systems, frankly.
Cause it's come up with the jail. You brought that up too. And go ahead.
A small piece of that puzzle would be the Anoka County Opioid Solutions Initiative. Part of the opioid settlement that took place a couple of years ago, Anoka County received a lot of money over 18 years. And we're using that money through the Anoka County Opioid Solutions Initiative. And we're, it's, a lot of it's education. Uh, but we're educating the public on opioid abuse and prevention. And uh, I think that's taking, taken some of the weight off of what was happening in-
Will this be something like group homes where there's going to be um, off-site of a hospital, where there's going to be places for people to be away from whatever is causing them to be dependent or continue?
Again, it's, it's probably more about education.
Okay, support groups and-
Naloxone.
Oh, just-
Distribution of naloxone, free naloxone through our library system. Commissioner Meisner, go ahead and take-
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I was, you're done.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I was just going to jump on board though with that. So thank you for bringing that up. Um, yeah, one of the actual items is naloxone kits in all of our libraries. But um, also, so this is a newly, right, a new um, uh, committee or body of work, the opioid solution. So they did a ton of work. The first year was just getting that infrastructure in place. And again, they have a very well-versed uh, committee as well that is working with that. Um, I know for myself, when we did get this money at, for Anoka County, it was $18 million. I was like, okay, what I don't want is just like shiny pamphlets and like material. I really want this to go into the community. And they spent a lot of time asking the community, what is really the needs around opioid? And so we are, we just finished, I believe it was a total of seven. Um, but one of those is taking that money and giving it to people who are already doing this work. Not necessarily group homes, but other agencies that are either in the prevention or education for specifically substance use disorder. So those, those are, I want to say it's 250 uh, each for the grants and it's a two-year cycle. Because all of this is so new, um, we are asking for like flexibility. So after two years, we're going to take a look at that, meaning they're not sure if they're going to necessarily give the same grant money over and over again to the same agencies, if they'll have another, you know, call out for a need and maybe every two years do that. Uh, but regardless, they've already actually done a ton of work and some actionable items that we can see in a year, a year and a half. It's been really great.
Yeah.
Just a quick follow-up for, for those of you that are following the opioid issue. If you need naloxone and you're near an AED in Anoka County, there's probably naloxone in that AED cabinet. Uh, that was one of the initiatives that this opioid group did. They uh, they attempted to get naloxone in all the AED cabinets in Anoka County. So if you're near somebody that's overdosing, that's a nugget of information.
Well, it's, it sounds like there's always gaps and programs are changing and what people can find from federal government to local uh, government is going to change a lot. So um, we wish you all good luck in addressing the changing landscape of who provides for those who can't take care of themselves. Cause it sounds like there's a lot of gaps and um, the area that's concerning, like people sitting in jail waiting for their hearings, that's really sad. Very sad. And it'll be costly. What an expensive way to take care of people who would be better cared for elsewhere and, and um, the gaps with mental health issues is um, an area where you have what? Two, two, three pages of programs probably? You probably have a list that you printed out.
Yeah.
We have a lot. There's a lot. Yeah. And how, yeah, how do people find what they might need? Some of it's going to be intersecting or meeting with the social worker, calling the county. And then the person at the reception desk can help get them down to the person that could help them with whatever their need might be. So I want to give each of the commissioners a little time to do what we call closing statements because we're so happy to have them here. And these may not have been the topics they wanted to talk about, but they were ones that our members thought were important. And so I'd like to give you each that opportunity. And I think we'll just start here with Commissioner Scott Schulte. You want to share a few words with your constituents who are here or watching later?
Well, thank you, Julie, and thanks to the league for having us. I generally don't go on very long, but I will, uh, I will bring up Highway 10, uh, just because I'm proud and happy that that's almost done. Getting rid of the stoplights on Highway 10 through Anoka and Ramsey was kind of a signature item that I'm rather proud to have done. Uh, Highway 65 is our next big project. I won't be around for the completion of that. Well, hopefully I'll still be alive, but I won't be on the town anymore. I, I trust my colleagues will handle that wonderfully as they continue that. I'm glad we've done this. I, I want everybody to understand that this current county board is changing quickly. We're becoming more collegial than we've ever been. We're casting politics aside. It's been a challenge the last couple of years because politics uh, got thrust into our county board really deeply. And it divided us the way it should never have done. I am taking it upon myself and others are doing it as well, to make sure it goes away. The league, thank you. Uh, the league was a, a great help in in solidifying that in my mind and making sure that it's the right thing to do. I mean, I knew it was the right thing to do. They just, them showing up at our board meetings and uh, being there, uh, just-
Watching.
Again, I, I'm not going to go on any longer. Uh, thank you for being here tonight. Uh, we got a long way to go. Anoka County's in good hands. Get a good group of commissioners. Uh, more importantly, you've got a great group of employees, 2,500 employees roughly that do one heck of a job for Anoka County. Our new administrator who came right here out of Andover is leading us uh, better than we've ever been led administratively. And I'm really proud to have Jim on board. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Commissioner Mike Kamash.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I want to hop on that a little bit too, about, uh, one of the things that we talked about earlier was um, committees. And we call it the committee of a whole. We used to have, you know, individual um, um, committees across the board. We still have them. But what we've done is every um, commissioner sits on every committee. Uh, which has done a couple of different things. One, it gives us more information as commissioners. We're, we're right there when all the decisions are being made. But the other one is it takes power away from the chairman. The chair no longer decides, this committee's going to have these three people on it, this committee's going to have these three people on it, this committee's going to have these three people on it. This is going to be the chair, this is going to be the chair, this is going to be the chair. That's where politics comes in, sometimes. What it's done is now we have, everybody's on the, all, everybody's on the committees, all that the, the board chair for me for this year, uh, has to do is appoint the chair. And that's the person that runs the meeting. So I think that has reduced the power of the chairman of the board, which I think is a good thing.
Or chairwoman.
Or chairwoman. I said, I just said, just chair. Um, chair of the board. Um, but I, I think that's been a good thing. And I think we've learned a lot from it. Plus it's given us, like I said, more information. So uh, one of the other things I've wanted to do since I've been on the, um, the board has been to uh, work towards a rotation in the, in the board chair. Um, and at the, I was appointed in 2024 to be the board chair and I was appointed again this year in 2025 to be the board chair. And I made the statement at that meeting, when we decided on it, that that would be the last year of, I'll be board chair. Um, if, for the time being at least. Because I'm not going to go three years because then that defeats the purpose of rotating the chair. Uh, so we're going to rotate the chair this year. We'll find a new chair. And um, I think that's what we should do. We should probably decide, you know, amongst ourselves. We'll still take a vote. There's still that part of politics still on this thing. But I think that's a good thing is to say we're moving on to someone else. Give them the experience, give them the opportunity. Um, so that's, that's one of my goals. Uh, yes, I do apologize for the last part of Highway 10's construction project. I, uh, myself was driving up the other day, a Saturday afternoon, after my wife and I had celebrated our 45th wedding anniversary, uh, coming up and I realized that Main Street was closed. I couldn't get off to get home. Didn't see the sign. Uh, and I was, I was being critical of our staff until I went by it the next day and said, oh, there it is. Closed. Okay. But it's almost done now. Uh, the expansion of the three lanes all the way down through Coon Rapids and um, up to Round Lake Boulevard is almost finished. So that'll be great. And um, I think you're all going to enjoy that part of it.
Julie.
Commissioner Julie Jepson, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, being on this board for a little over two and a half years, almost three years, I've come to sincerely appreciate uh, the work of county government. Um, it is imperative, so important in, in our everyday lives, but we are the most ignored. Excluding this room. Very few people understand and know what county government does. And I've just been in so um, inspired by many of the staff, by many of the um, opinions they have and their expertise and their compassion and their empathy for who they give work to, who they give their life, their hours in their day to. Um, and, and to Commissioner Schulte's point, um, for the most part, we do work really well together, I find. Um, we have an administrator that literally is the glue and one of the best hires I've ever done in my life. Um, it is a great place to work, great work to do. Now, that doesn't mean that everything is kumbaya all the time, at all. Um, there are tough conversations that we have had and will be having, uh, with the jail, with, just throw it out there, with certain lawsuits going on. But I hope at the end of the day, one, you can reach out to each of us and get a response. Because that's our job. That's what you elect us to do. And two, to know that even though there are, there's conflict, there's disagreements, at, at my heart, and I would have to assume my colleagues, I won't speak for them, we want to do a good job. We really want to do a good job. Will you agree with it 100%? No. And that's okay. I'm not going to agree with you 100%. But the work still needs to be done and you have commissioners who are committed to that. So- So on behalf of myself, just wanted you to know that.
And Commissioner Mandy Meisner, please.
No, thank you again so much, League of Women Voters, for hosting this. I 100% agree with Scott. I mean, this is a good idea. I don't, I don't know if you've done this in the past, a town hall, but I think it's great, because, you know, there's some issues that the community has questions about, and we can all just have a conversation about that. I will say, I know we didn't touch really in the details of maybe what you guys wanted to know, and to Julie's point, you can reach out. And also, it's going to be a rough couple of years ahead of us. It's been a rough couple of year, like, last 12 months. So I, I really take that to heart, and I will do, I will do what I can. I don't really promise anything, because honestly, my, my power is somewhat limited, but I can connect you, I can listen, and try to make improvements. So I mean that. And then my, my email is mandy.meisner@anokacounty.mn.gov. So please email me at any time. And again, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, thank you, commissioners. I want to, I want to let you know that we recognize you are truly public servants, being here with us to inform us on important issues and being accessible. And I just think we should thank them with a round of applause and.